Hello, everybody. I will be calling the Monday, May 13th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting to Order here at 6:30 PM. As tonight's Planning Commission Meeting will be held in person, it's also available on Zoom. And I will lead the meeting and the public will be welcome to participate when invited throughout this meeting. We'll have a series of public hearings. You can attend in person or via Zoom. And the instructions for participating in on Zoom are posted online at www.burnsvillemn.gov in our Public Meeting Calendar section. If you're unable to participate this evening and you'd like to submit public testimony, I encourage you to email your comments to city staff or mail your comments directly to City Hall. Again, the Zoom instructions are zoom.us/join. Our Zoom meeting ID is 895-555-84676. And if you log into the meeting, please use the chat feature to tell the moderator which of the items you'd like to speak to. You can also call into the meeting on your phone. It's the same meeting ID number, 895-555-84676. For each of our hearings, I'll open up a time when callers may speak and we'll give more instructions at that time. Moving along here, our first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda from commissioners? Any changes from staff?
No changes.
Seeing no changes, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
And seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our second item is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, April 22nd, 2024. Are there any changes to the minutes from staff? No changes, any changes? Sorry. From commissioners, any changes from staff?
No changes.
I'm getting my left and right mixed up. Seeing no changes, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Hamilton, seconded by Commissioner Anderson. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our third item, this is a public hearing, application of Aurora Investments LLC for a Planned Unit Development Amendment for a new 5,120 square foot, two tenant and two drive-through lanes. Aurora Village Center at 1815 and 1819 County Road, 42 West. We'll have City Planner Kevin Shea give a presentation. The floor is yours, Mr. Shea.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. So as the chair stated, we have a planned unit development before you tonight for a new 5,120 square foot building with two tenants and a retail or a drive-through lane for each tenant in the Aurora Village Center. Did the slides not make it in? Looks like the slides aren't in here, Deb. Second. Is there a way to refresh it from the G-Drive?
I have my packet printed out if you want to use just the overhead camera.
Sure. I don't know why this one's not refreshed with PowerPoint.
We're having some issues before meetings. I think if you put it right in the middle there, yep.
Okay. All right, well, I'll do my best with what we've got here. So the project boundary is the northeast section of the existing Aurora Village Center. It does occupy, currently there's 86 parking spaces situated there. This development would redevelop that area. And I'll go to where my next slide was. All right, it's not as big as I'd like. So the proposed development does have a 5,100 square foot retail restaurant site. There's two tenants for that site. I'm going to orient them east and west, so there's an eastern tenant and a western tenant. Both of them show drive-through lanes. One is shorter than the other, so the west side is designed and intended for a retail tenant that is a fast casual dining, so there is no menu board for the drive-through. It is simply a drive-through with one pickup window. That's an important distinction, just given the stacking distances that are the difference between the two drive-through lanes. The eastern tenant is intended to be a coffee, fast food type tenant with the traditional drive-through orientation with a menu board and then a pickup window. So that's the distinction between the two sides of the site. As part of that, the redevelopment, there is an ADA connection, pedestrian connection being made from the northwest corner of this site into an adjacent through the Cafe Zupas site, which is under construction. And then that extends further up into the public right-of-way for the intersection at 42. So they are making a pedestrian connection there. Additionally, alongside that, trash enclosure is, or the trash for the site is enclosed within the building, so there is no trash enclosure proposed on the site. That would be accessed during off-times from the southern entrance in the building as part of that. So that's a run-through of the existing site and changes. With this, there are two PUD amendments requested, where there are two areas where they do not meet city code. The first is that they are requesting the western drive-through to have three stacking spaces where six is required. And that's associated with the change in the operations of it, having no menu board. They don't feel that it's needed to have the additional stacking spaces, as this would be a pickup window. So all orders will be placed online and then they would be picking up the orders from that online ordering system at that window. So it would just be a pickup, no payment at it. There maybe, I mean, they could add future operations for payment, but it's intended to be only a payment pickup area. So there's no wait time between ordering onsite and then picking up through the window. The other PUD amendment is to allow a reduced number of parking spaces as required for the Aurora Village Center as a whole. So they are required to have 400, or they are proposing 422 parking spaces, where 501 is required based on the various retail and square footage areas of the commercial uses. There was a parking study submitted as part of the application that was required by staff to show that there was adequate parking onsite based on the uses of peak times at various times of the day for the different uses. That is part of the packet and did show that they are, won't even come close to utilizing the 422 spaces that are onsite. I think the peak on the Saturday afternoon was right around 290 of the 422 are expected to be utilized. So with, so with that, staff is supportive of the PUD deviation for that. Let's see. Let me try to touch on everything. One additional area to mention on here is that there is a screening requirement for drive-through lanes to be screened from adjacent pedestrian vehicles, especially for the drive-through on the east side, as the flow does point vehicle headlights into the north-south drive aisle on the west side. So there is a condition from staff to include additional screening landscaping area along that eastern edge along here to make sure that no headlights bleed into the traffic that's going north and south in the drive aisle to reduce those conflicts and meet the city code requirement. As part of the PUD deviations, there do show some PUD benefits. One of them is that we're actively developing and utilizing an underutilized space that is currently excess parking space. They're well overparked for what they need for the site. Another area is that they are providing additional green space and landscaping. So because this is all impervious today, every area of green space is essentially an improvement from what they have and an improvement for the Aurora Village Center as a whole. So this site goes from 100% impervious essentially to 91% impervious with some green space. The Aurora Village as a whole is at 71% when you include all their adjacent site areas, because this is internal parking area, only it wasn't counted for the green space areas that are adjacent to County Road 42 and things like that, that are part of the larger parcel. So that's seen as a benefit as well, along with making the pedestrian connection, and they do provide bicycle parking onsite. So those are some added benefits that come about as part of the development. I did want to share the landscape plan as part of that, so bear with me as I go through the packet. There we go. So as part of the landscape plan, they are proposing additional trees, shrubs, and they're meeting three of the four required, being overstory trees, deciduous trees, shrubs, and I believe it's perennials is the other one. So they are providing three of the four of those over the city code requirement. They focus them kind of surrounding the entirety of the site. They're kind of interspersed throughout. The one area that staff requested additional would be on this east side. And as part of that, they will have additional landscaping then as part of this, which will increase the benefit as well. So with that, I know my presentation was a little all over, but if the commission has any questions for me, the applicant is present on the virtually, if you have any questions for them as well.
Thank you for pivoting to the old-school presentation.
No problem.
Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Anderson?
The west side building where there is only space for three stacking, if that concept doesn't work, is there a way to, for them to stack more cars?
There's potential that they could, however, it would lead into the drive aisles for the parking bays. So as you, on the, on the site plan or on this landscape plan, it would, I mean, there's no way to get it as a dedicated only drive-through area, unless they restripe some of the areas outside of it and then would have to, it would change the flow of traffic, because there would then necessitate being a one-way flow at some point within there.
Commissioner Timmerman?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Shea, I have a couple of questions, mainly about just traffic flow within the larger parcel itself, the larger property. I don't know, maybe this is the best slide. Do you have the pictometry slide in there by chance? The one with the kind of the Google overhead? Yep, let's do that, there we go. So initially, when I had looked at this project and kind of gone out there to, to see what it looked like, I'd envisioned it being bigger than what it actually is. So looking at this slide, it really looks like the building itself, the footprint, is only going to cover about the first, I don't know, maybe eight rows or the northernmost eight rows of those parking stalls. So there's still a lot of parking that's left at this property. So I, that to me is not a concern. I've always had a hard time in this property with traffic flow, though, and I've noticed a lot of, you know, vehicles cutting across the open parking lot, which is, you know, going to happen when it's underutilized. My question is, how will the existing businesses handle not only the queuing from the new development, but also just cars coming in and out there? Can you kind of just show me how you anticipate cars coming in and out of the new, I guess, twin drive-through?
Yep, yeah, so I'll start on the site plan, I think, and then I'll try and talk about it as.
Okay.
So the drive-throughs are only one-way, so they're kind of going to flow in a counterclockwise pattern, essentially. So if you're looking and, I'm going to talk traffic patterns from the east first. So if everybody's coming from the east first, they would enter, they'd cross across here and enter the drive-through on the west side of the building. You would then exit out through here and you'd have the option of either taking this drive aisle out back to the east or you could then go behind Zupas or in front of Zupas, I guess, and go out and down the entrance that's down to the southwest corner. If you're going into the tenant that's on the east side of the site, you would essentially come in and you would circle down through here and then turn into the drive-through from the south side and then exit through the north side. Then you would have the option of either turning left or right to either go out the east side this way or circle around behind Cafe Zupas down to the southwest exit. So in terms of drive-through turning traffic movements, that's how that will play out. You kind of have two exits, southwest and northeast corners of the, for the two tenants and two entrances, which are going to be the northwest and then, I guess, straight south for the two drive-through entrances. In terms of traffic as a whole, this lines up and is essentially the same building footprint layout, drive aisles as the Zupas next door, so all of those are straight-line flows between the two sites. There's no curves or anything. And then the addition of parking islands would then delineate. So if we're going back to the overall site here, oh, this is a different one than I had before. The, this did not have, or the current parking arrangement existing today doesn't have any parking islands breaking up and doesn't have any drive aisles that are essentially bisecting the middle of the parking lot. So those get added with this and with the Cafe Zupas to create essentially another drive aisle that I'm just ballparking it on this image, but runs east-west around, right around here. And roughly, the attempt was to line it up as closely as possible with the existing drive aisle that extends east. That way, there's reduced traffic conflicts and essentially only one four-way stop that you'd need if traffic were to move north and south and east and west on that intersection.
Got it, that makes sense. Could I ask a couple of follow-up? Yes, go ahead, thank you. So the, it's kind of interesting hearing you say coming from east, because it's, it's really east-bound traffic that would be turning south and then west in to get there. Since other than, I guess, coming down Irving and then turning in there, traffic from the east, that's the only option that they have. And I think this was discussed with Cafe Zupas, but is there, on the westernmost side or maybe the second aisle, is there going to be updated paint or signage or something to help folks kind of navigate through the parking area?
I'm not sure, I haven't followed quite along. Do you, the signage as you come, so let's say as you come from the south, you know, like if you're entering from the west, come from the south up the middle here to distinguish turning left and right at, like, right around here or?
Well, I mean, back on the, kind of the Google image, the far western aisle in the parking lot.
Yep.
What I'm thinking about is people coming in, the only way they can get in on the west side there is if they're going northbound on five. So is there going to be signage in that first lane there to get them up to the new drive-through businesses? Will they try to route it through? I'm just thinking about, you know, the, presumably, the heavier traffic is going to be going to these two businesses and Cafe Zupas on a very frequent basis. I'm just curious about that southern part of the parking lot. Is there going to be increased signage or help getting people up there?
It's not a staff requirement. We did not include a requirement to include additional signage down here to direct traffic north first, because it was part of the site outside of the project boundary. However, we could request that as an additional condition to, for the ownership group to, or the ownership of the parcel to put additional signage there as part of that to help traffic flow.
And, and we can save that for discussion, too. I don't necessarily think it's necessary or needed requirement. I think it's something I thought of as I was looking at it. You know, it's, I just want to be mindful of the existing businesses that are in the rest of the complex right now that, you know, introducing this, extra traffic will create some congestion or confusion. At the same time, I think there's tons of parking still, so that's a good thing. Commissioner Hamilton?
So I was out there today just looking. You know, what I couldn't visualize is the space between where Cafe Zupa is or going and where this is going to go. Is, is that going to create some type of bottleneck with cars between the three businesses?
There's a, there's a separate, here, go back to this one. So there's a separate landscaped island here that separates the drive-through from the western tenant here, from the drive aisle that will be between Zupas and the two new retail tenant or commercial tenants. So essentially, this should not, it shouldn't create any traffic conflicts, because it's keeping the existing drive aisle that runs north-south between the two tenants. The two sites.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Any indication of what type of businesses are going in there?
In terms of the, so they haven't given specifics on names of like certain companies. The western half is intended to be a fast casual. And so they did submit as part of the packing materials, there was Chipotle numbers, essentially. So it's Chipotle's version of a pickup lane to establish, or give some details on what you might expect for that type of use. That is not to say that that is going to be the end user, but it's something similar to that fast casual dining. The eastern tenant is not identified either and is intended to be something along a coffee or fast food tenant. So less, so I think Chipotle fast casual, the other side would then be more of that fast food with the menu board.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson, do you have another question?
Yeah, the, I was just looking at this and I realized that there's no driveline way over on the west side of Zupas. That's all their drive-through. So the driveline to get either, I don't know, the Zupas, that comes south, doesn't it? But everything has to go between Zupas and this new development.
Deb, can you help me with this one? I think there is a driveline on the west side.
There is. What they did for Cafe Zupas is there is parking that continues along the very north. So then there's a 24-foot wide drive aisle east-west, and it goes all the way to the edge of the current parking lot on the west. And that is an open driveline then to the south in addition to their drive-through lane.
Looking at it, this says there's two driveline planes there.
So there, and this is what I think Deb was trying to get at. I'll pull it up, because it'll probably be helpful if I can find the image. Uh, okay, uh, well, let's, I can stick with this for now. I think it's working, but.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not huge, but I think it's working. So I think what Deb was saying is that this, essentially this driveline up here does go all the way to this end side on this over here, and there is a driveline that runs all the way south that continues outside of the Zupas area. So there is a connection, other than the north-south connection, between the two sites.
Okay. Question, please.
Commissioner Hamilton?
How does this impact, one, parking for LA Fitness and people getting to like cost cutters and UPS, that flow of traffic? Is there any obstruction with that?
No, there shouldn't be any obstruction for traffic flow through that. And there, there is adequate parking for all the various uses in the, the shopping center.
Thank you, Mr. Shea. I think we'll conclude the presentation and move this to our public hearing section. So at 6:53, I'll open the public hearing on this matter. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this, you're welcome to approach the podium. And if you can state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the commission and staff. My name is Ed Farr with Edward Farr Architects. I'm the project architect representing Aurora Investments this evening. And yes, our civil engineer unfortunately caught a little bug over the weekend and is listening virtually, in case there's any tough civil engineering questions for us. But we're available for questions. I, I do have some of the renderings and other things that Kevin wasn't allowed to show on his PowerPoint, unfortunately. If you need to see any other documents, that's fine. The answers that he gave regarding some of your questions from the commission are accurate regarding leasing. Just called the leasing agents this afternoon to find out if there was any updates on that. No signed leases. We're looking at a variety of different restaurant opportunities and other tenants. So cautiously optimistic. Everybody wants us to get our entitlements first, as you can imagine, before signing a lease. So if you have any questions, I'm, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Farr. Any questions for the applicant? No questions.
Okay, great. I'll stand by.
Is there anyone on, anyone else in the room that would like to speak to this matter? Seeing none, is there anybody on Zoom that wants to speak to this matter?
I don't see anybody looking to speak.
Okay. We'll close our public hearing at 6:54. And open it up for any additional discussion from commissioners? Any additional comments, questions, discussions, motion? Commissioner Timmerman?
I'll, I'll see if I can move to a motion unless other people have comments. But I think it's a great project. I think this is an underutilized space. It's been a vacant parking lot, probably even, it used to be a grocery store, I think. And I think that back part of the parking lot probably was underutilized then as well. So pretty exciting for the local community here, and thank you for all your work on it. I'm going to look around, because I am thinking we're all on the same page. So I'm going to make a motion that we approve to the city council based on the recommendations that city staff has made tonight.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Commissioner Hamilton. Beat everyone else to the punch. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. We'll move on to our next item on the agenda. As soon as I scroll this up here. So this is, uh, this is a hearing, this is an application of Mark Somerville for a zoning ordinance amendment to create a definition for outdoor sports, recreation or entertainment facilities and add it as a conditional use in the MIX, M-I-X, Mixed Use Zoning District and Planned Unit Development Amendment to operate an outdoor skate park at 14275 Burnhaven Drive. And presenting is Ms. Garros, City Planner.
Thank you. We do have the applicant in the audience this evening, and he would be willing to come up. The applicant operates Skateropolis, which has been a business in the shopping center for a few years now, and they've had an opportunity to acquire an existing brand, if you will. So they're looking to bring that here to Burnsville. It is currently in the city of Hopkins. Bring it to Burnsville, it's something that is very, uh, great fit in terms of their business, you know, inside and then to offer this as well. So that is really what they're looking for. And in discussing this with the applicant, we noted that although there is a use somewhere in the zoning ordinance for this type of facility, there was no definition. And we have, in some cases, these are allowed open, you know, are outdoors, and some say indoor recreation, et cetera, facilities. So what we did is, we suggested the applicant file for a zoning ordinance amendment, and then we worked to create a definition, which is before you this evening, and that's the zoning ordinance request to add the definition and then also to add that specific use as a conditional use in the mixed zoning district. And then the third part of the application is the skate park itself. The site that is proposed for the skate park is north, on the northwest corner of JCPenney. You can see from the pictometry, it's an outdoor area that is not used. It's not used for parking, kind of used on the south. There, you can see that there is a loading area for pennies. And then just to the west of where the red, red line is going to the building to the north, there's also an inset area for some loading there as well. In terms of outdoor sports, recreation, entertainment facilities, this is currently allowed, as I indicated, as a conditional use permit in our B4 Highway Commercial District. In trying to come up with how do we define these types of uses, we wanted to make sure that the application was not so specific that we have to come back each time and, you know, try, try to be a broader range. So we really looked at the Center Village vision, and I included this in your background report. I won't go through all of them, but basically for Center Village, the types of things that we're talking about is how do you bring different types of folks to the Burnsville Center, entertainment-type facilities, things that are cool, spaces, those types of things. So, so this definitely, I think, falls into that. We also took a look at all of the recreation-type uses throughout the ordinance in the various districts and pulled those together to come up with the proposed definition. So the definition then would be an outdoor facility or space designed, constructed and operated by a private enterprise for recreational purposes and open to the general public, including a number of various uses, including skateboarding and similar type uses. So that is the, what is recommended or drafted for the ordinance definition. And then also then to add that outdoor sports, recreation or entertainment facility as a conditional use in the mixed zoning district. And looking at the. And looking at the site, if you drive back there, I drove back just today just to check and see, and it can use a lot of cleanup, and the applicant is willing to do that, and they're looking forward to doing that. What I want to call attention to the commissioners are that there are a couple of utility facilities back there. So we just want to make sure that when the placement of the ramp is installed and the fencing, that the utilities will have enough area that they'll be able to service those too. So there is a condition that's recommended that we just obtain something in writing from the utilities that they're okay with the site, and the site can operate, and they can operate their utilities. In terms of the site plan itself, it's a 50 by 50 area. To the north would be that back wall that you just saw in previous slide, and basically looking at fencing in the area where the ramp will be located, and that will be staffed from staff from Skateropolis. The hours anticipated are from noon until 9:00 PM, and those are during the summer months or months when there's not snow. In the winter, it would not be open unless maybe, you know, if we have a winter like this with no snow, they could do that, but otherwise not anticipated. And the access would be on the south side. This site is located in close proximity to where Skateropolis operates inside the shopping center. So for folks that are interested in using the ramp, they would need to go into Skateropolis to get their wristband, come back out, and again, there will be staff on the outside here that would let them in to the facility and monitor to make sure that all the safety, safety precautions are in effect. One of the things that they're looking at doing in terms of the fencing, we do have a provision in the ordinance that fencing, if it's chain link, it needs to be coated. So we have included just a condition to meet that condition of the ordinance. And then this did not show up so well in the, in your, it's, hopefully you can see it better here. It did not show up so well in the packet, but it's basically 50 feet dimensionally. And then, and I'm not sure if you can see, but in this location, they have like a person standing there. So I believe this is, this is where the 13 feet is, and then the ramp actually, I think, at this point is about 17 feet in height. And this is where it exists currently in Hopkins, and has been used there. People have enjoyed it. And another one with a young, young individual that's much more.
Cool.
Much more cool than I am, or ever will be. Exactly. In terms of the PUD benefits, I believe that there are many. This is a business that's unique to Burnsville. This is also something that is kind of unique within the Twin Cities area, and it is, the outdoor skate park fits great with what the Skateropolis does. They have a lot of programs that they work with youth and others that are interested in the different sports, and they do a number of camps, they teach skills, and there are all sorts of opportunities and programs that they provide. It's a family-owned business and has been successful, successful here in the city. It does, not in an area where they'll have an issue with parking. There is some parking in the area for J.C. Penney, but this is off to the side, and the hours, you know, looking from noon to 9:00 PM, just don't anticipate that there will be any major conflicts, and there is quite a field of parking available on the south side of J.C. Penney. There are no deviations that are requested as part of the amendment, and the recommendation is to approve the project subject to five conditions. One is our standard condition, that it's subject to previously approved planned unit developments and conditional use permits. Also, that use is listed in the underlying zoning district in the mixed district, that those can be approved as part of the PUD. I believe this has been included in a couple of the more recent planned unit development amendments for the shopping center, but just in case, we included it here as well. The chain link fence needing to be vinyl coated, written utility, or written documentation from the utility providers, and if they need signage, they will need a sign permit. And with that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garros. This is, this is a cool project, and I think the change to the, to the definition will be great for the Center Village, you know, kind of the long-term Center Village vision to allow for fun, cool things to happen there, which I think is something we all want. Are there any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Anderson.
What other activities seems to be indicated in the presentation? There might be other activities within that area?
Not necessarily within the area, but within the whole Center Village area. It talked about recreational and entertainment-type facilities, and in the vision plan, they showed a number of things. You know, maybe there are some smaller outdoor music venues or arts areas, maybe some areas, again, with different types of yoga or those types of things, just any number of things to draw people in, maybe an actual like skating rink or winter activity area, those types of things.
But nothing besides the ramp in here?
No, this, just be the ramp just in this particular area. That is correct.
Other questions? Commissioner Hamilton.
Has mall management and ownership expressed their thoughts and opinions on this project?
That I will let Mr. Somerville address for you.
Yes.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Yes, sir. My name is Mark Somerville. I'm at 1340 McAndrews Road East here in Burnsville. And yeah, the mall has really been, the new mall ownership has really been on board with trying to revitalize it. So yeah, they're definitely open to having the ramp there. They see it as a symbol of change for the mall. As people drive up, they'll be able to see not only young kids flying through the air, but some of us old heads too. So it'll definitely be a thing that'll grab people's attention as they pull up, and they'll go, wow, they promised change and change is coming.
Thank you. Any other questions from commissioners? Seeing none, we'll, thank you.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
We'll conclude the presentation and open up the public hearing at 7:07. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak to this matter? If so, you're welcome to approach the podium. Nobody is rushing to the podium. Is there anybody on?
Nope.
Zoom or on, okay, so we don't have anybody waiting to speak to this matter. We'll close the public hearing at 7:08. Any further discussion from commissioners, comments or, or motion? Commissioner Hamilton.
Without any additional comments, I move that we approve this project.
Okay, can you, it's on your screen there, if you can read the, the formal recommendation.
I recommend that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the planned unit development amendment and zoning ordinance amendments to allow a skateboard park at 14275 Burnhaven Drive, subject to the following conditions.
Great, and there's five conditions listed.
There's five conditions.
Yep, so there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Anderson. Motion and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. This.
Invite us to the ribbon cutting. I want to see some of these guys on skates or on skateboards.
Definitely.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Great, thank you.
So our next item, this is, this is item number five. This is also a public hearing. This is an application of MJM Architects for a planned unit development amendment for wall signs to be, to exceed 300 square feet on the future Best Buy and Cub Grocery at 1600 and 1750 County Road 42 West. Also presenting, Ms. Garros.
Thank you. The application is for the new Cub redevelopment site on County Road 42 and 5. As you drive by, you'll note that it is being graded and all sorts of work is happening. You can see the Best Buy building going up. That will be located in the northeast corner of the site. And the application initially was included, a larger sign for Cub Foods also, but they have modified their signage, and they no longer need a deviation or PUD amendment for that. So it's really, this application is to look at one sign on the south face of the new Best Buy store to allow that to be a little bit over, let's see, 500, or to be at 578 square feet. 300 square feet is the ordinance standard, but there are other sites that we included in the report that have received approvals for larger signs, and several of them have been for Best Buy at other locations in the city. So this kind of is in alignment with that. We included the information in the background. The largest sign that has been approved was 984 square feet at the former Gordmans site at Burnsville Center. That's been taken down because Gordmans is no longer a business there. So we are looking at this one application. Basically, what Best Buy is looking at, as you can see on the site plan, it'll have Cub Foods, which will back to County Road 5. And then Best Buy is really in the rear of the project area, being in the northeast corner. There will be, there are plans for two retail buildings, Retail D and F, to be located on the site. In this area of the site, or excuse me, next to the site, this is the existing Holiday Gas Station, and then there are three retail pads that will be located near County Road 42. So they are looking at a 578 as opposed to a 300 square foot maximum size for an individual sign. They are, with the signage proposed on the building, still less than the overall square footage that's permitted by the ordinance. And the only deviation is the size. Staff is, we support the application, believe that the applicant has made a good, a good project. The Best Buy, as you can see, is a little bit different than we've had in the past. In the past applications, there, the tag has been a lot bigger, and that's kind of been part of the, part of the issue. In terms of this sign, it'll be located on the south side of the building. So unlike other signage that generally is looking out to the street, this is internal to the project site. So they are, they are not facing a street. The, they're almost about 470 feet from the closest part of Best Buy, that south face to County Road 42. They'll have those other buildings in between, and the sign is really proportional with how they have designed the south face of the building, and staff would concur with that. These are the other applications that we found where the council has granted deviations for larger signage. And actually, I believe it was in the 2011 Best Buy application that signage was looked at, should we increase the size of signage in the ordinance? And council at that point in time was okay with keeping it at 300 square feet, but also indicated that they could look at individual situations through planned unit development for larger signage, if it makes sense. And they have granted larger signage in several applications. And then with the application, they provided the site information. This is showing basically the Cub Foods, and then you can see one of the tenant buildings, which is not under construction yet, but will come after. So this gives you an idea of the view of the signage. And then looking from the, this would be the southeast corner at Aldrich Avenue and 42, you can see the, just the top part of the Best Buy, best at this point. And this would be looking at the entrance to the site from County Road 42. So Cub would be actually on this side. This is one of the outlet buildings. That's what these would be. So it gives you an idea of the view there. This is actually the northeast corner of the building. This is what faces the residential areas to the south, the townhomes, and these signs are both meeting the ordinance. They're less than 300 square feet. With that, staff is recommending approval of the project, subject to the four conditions identified. And I just wanted to let the commission know that one of the requirements is if you have signage and lighted signage facing residential, there is a condition in the ordinance to put a light sensor on that so that the ambient light changes as it gets darker. The applicant is showing that on their plans already. I just included it as a condition because that's something a little bit odd that we don't always look at. But with that, staff will stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Garros. First, I want to commend the applicant, and actually, all our applicants today provided imagery that helped us really easily visualize what they're proposing, which I think goes a long way. A quick question, and just clarification, the sign is really defined, it's not the whole blue panel. If you could put up a picture of the front of the building, like there's, there it is. The sign is not the entire blue panel. The sign is really Best Buy with the yellow tag.
That's correct. The way that the ordinance defines that is you put the closest box or circle around the signage and the letters, and that's how the sign area is calculated.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Great. Any questions from commissioners? Commissioner Timmerman.
Ms. Garros, the tenants and the outlets, is their sign size affected at all by these larger businesses, or is each building going to meet, I guess, be able to meet the ordinance as a standalone project?
As far as we know, again, we don't know who the tenants will be for those buildings, but as far as we know, there should be plenty of signage area available for them.
Okay. And the individual buildings, it's case, case-by-case sort of basis, whether they propose a bigger sign or smaller sign, it's just to be determined.
Correct. Yep. You really have to wait until you have the tenant to see, you know, what they're, especially if it's a franchise type of, type of business.
Great. Any other questions from commissioners? Okay, seeing none. I will open, this is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public, public hearing at 7:17. Is there anybody in the room that like to, would like to speak to this matter? If so, please approach the podium. Nobody is approaching the podium? Is there anybody on, oh, okay. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Doug Cantrell with MJM Architects out of Nashville, Tennessee. I live at 313 Dandelion Drive, Lebanon, Tennessee. And we're the architect for the Best Buy portion. We've got representatives from Cub Foods and Best Buy here as well, as well as the developer themselves, Sterling Properties.
Okay. Does anybody have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Timmerman.
I just thought of one that I was going to ask Ms. Garros, but I'll ask you. So thank you for being here. As far as the ambient light, the language in the recommendation is, is probably vague on purpose because I'm assuming that means that the light conditions, when it gets dark, actually need to go down on the signage to not affect that of the neighboring properties. Is that correct?
That is a first for us, but it makes sense with a residential, so it's not lighting up the neighborhood.
So do you know after 1:00 AM, midnight, will that be nearly off, or what is that going to look like for those neighboring properties?
I would have to lean to Ms. Miranda on y'all, y'all turn the signs off after you close, right? So after closing hours, the signs go off.
Okay, great, thank you.
No other further questions, but thank you for, thank you, thank you for coming. And there's nobody on, we're still in the public hearing section? Nobody on Zoom?
Correct.
There's nobody on Zoom, seeing no other comments. We'll close the public hearing at 7:19, and I'll open up the floor for further questions or a motion from commissioners. I don't think I can make the, Commissioner Anderson.
I move that we tell the city council that they should approve the signage variation request with the conditions that staff has outlined.
Okay, so is there, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Braddock. Motion and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. We'll move on to our next item on our agenda, I think is updates. Our next planning commission meeting is May 27. Are there any other updates from commissioners? No updates? Any updates from staff?
Yes. Actually, the 27th is Memorial? No.
It's Memorial Day?
So we were gonna move it to the 28th, but our staff can't be here. So we're going to cancel that meeting. So that one is canceled. So your next meeting will be June 10.
Next meeting, June 10. Okay, thank you for, nobody will be here on Memorial Day, including myself.
That's right. And I'm sure people have vacation plans for that week as well.
Any other updates from staff?
We do have a couple. The, there is on June 3. Again, it's the Public Works Open House, kind of events happening all day. They do have a tour of the wastewater treatment plant. I know, you know, some folks went, or the water treatment plant, excuse me, went previously. But if anybody's interested, they are taking buses from the maintenance center for anybody from the public, you know, to go over and, and tour that facility in addition to some other things. And then on May 22, there is a city council work session, and the economic development strategic plan is going to be discussed. So if anyone has interest, just know that that is available. And in terms of applications that council has acted on, for the Chick-fil-A application, after a planning commission recommended denial, they actually withdrew that application. And we believe that they are going to be resubmitting something, hopefully that's more amenable to the issues that came up. And also, the McGowan interim use permit for Shelley Golf Course was approved. And I think with that, I think those are all the comments I had.
Okay, thank you. Our next item on the agenda is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.